Session of the Portland City Council. Good morning, Kealan. Could you please call the role?
Morning Mayor Rubio.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Hardisty. Maps. Commissioner Hardisty, did you just join?
Yes, here.
Good morning, Commissioner. Well, for sure, I'd like to acknowledge and welcome our new commissioners to the dais, Commissioner Carmen Rubio and Commissioner Mingus Maps. They've both been heavily engaged in City Hall activities for quite some time, and they're well up to speed and ready to hit the ground running as we enter the new year. But I also want to acknowledge that this is an historic occasion. This is the most diverse city council in the history of Portland, Oregon. And I could not be more thrilled with the city council that we have here today. And I'm so excited about the work that we're all going to do together in the future. So, welcome to the council. I will now read all of the legalese. Under Portland City Code and state law, the city council is holding this meeting electronically. All members of the council are attending remotely by video and teleconference, and the city has made several avenues available for the public to listen to the audio broadcast of this meeting. The meeting is available to the public on the city's YouTube channel, eGov pdx, wwwportlandoregon.gov/video and Channel 30. The public can also provide written testimony to council by emailing the council clerk at cctestimony@portlandoregon.gov. The council is taking these steps as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and the need to limit in-person contact and to promote physical distancing. The pandemic is an emergency that threatens the public health, safety, and welfare, which requires us to meet remotely by electronic communications. Thank you all, as usual, for your ongoing patience, your flexibility, and your understanding as we manage through this difficult situation to do the city's business. I will now turn this over to legal counsel to ask them to read the rules of order and decorum.
Good morning. To participate in council meetings, you may sign up in advance with the council clerk's office for communications to briefly speak about any subject. You may also sign up for public testimony on resolutions or the first readings of ordinances. The published council agenda at portlandoregon.gov/auditor contains information about how and when you may sign up for testimony while the city council is holding electronic meetings. Your testimony should address the matter being considered at the time. When testifying, please state your name for the record. Your address is not necessary. Please disclose if you are a lobbyist, and if you are presenting an organization for an organization, please identify it. The presiding officer determines the length of testimony. Individuals generally have three minutes to testify, unless otherwise stated. When your time is up, the presiding officer will ask you to conclude. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If there are disruptions, a warning will be given that further disruption may result in the person being placed on hold or ejected for the remainder of the electronic meeting. Please be aware that all council meetings are recorded.
Thank you very much for that. And colleagues, just as a reminder throughout the course of the meeting, if you'd like to ask a question or raise remarks, please raise your hand in the Zoom chat function. I use the participant list. That seems to be the easiest for me, but other people use other ways as well. And if you have any questions about that, just let me know. With that, our first official order of business in 2021 is to elect a new council president. It is Commissioner Hardisty's turn to do that. So, I think you're all aware of this, but the position rotates every six months. Commissioner Hardisty is next in line to serve as the council president. That would be through June 30th, 2021. Colleagues, I will accept a motion to elect Commissioner Hardisty council president. I'll move. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan makes the motion. Commissioner Rubio seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the role.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. Congratulations again, Commissioner Hardisty. Thank you. And with that, we will proceed into the agenda. The first item today is communications. Kealan, item number one.
Request of Grady Preston II to address council regarding police brutality.
Good morning.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear. You're good to go.
All right. Thank you. My name is Grady Preston II, and I am a homeowner in southeast Portland. I am honored to be speaking with the most diverse city council we've had. That is, until we recall either of the two rich white dudes that lied or is being investigated for breaking campaign finance laws to be reelected. But I just want to show you a quick few clips here. These are just PowerPoint presentation I put together about police brutality on a specific evening. So, as we know, and has been said by the mercury, incidents of police brutality have skyrocketed in the last few quarters of 2020. And Mayor Ted Wheeler, instead of stopping this, reducing police activity, he continues to push forward the fascist idea that police control works. That's the whole reason people are protesting. But nevertheless, more peace, more police will cause this problem to somehow go away. Here, this takes place September 27, 2020, on the 125th night of nightly protests. All the screenshots are taken from a single video that's just one minute and 42 seconds long, but I was not allowed to show. I have highlighted specific areas of importance in red and covered a few people's face for privacy. All right. So, it starts off here with someone of a celebrity, Officer 67, who has been known to be also called Portland Police Detective Eric Cammerer, runs up to two pedestrians, accosts them, tells them to continue traveling the direction they are traveling, and then pushes one of them. Then, another officer to his right pulls a mace can, and Officer 67 pushes this woman to the ground. Someone comes over to help him up. And here, Officer 67 again on the left pushes someone out of the way to keep shouting at him. It continues to escalate the violence here. Then, another officer grabs something out of someone's hand, and the officer behind him blindly maces that officer in the back of the head. The officer continues to threaten people with mace. This officer then shoves someone as hard as he can. Here, we see people walking away after being maced, trying to get medical assistance. They look behind them, and all of a sudden, they are rushed and shoved and attacked by the police. Here, you can see someone with a club pushing someone very hard from behind, shoving them down. There's the nightstick. They continue to push these people down the street, shouting at them. You can see the officer on the right is attacking someone from behind, and the one on the left is also pushing someone down. It's kind of hard to see, but you can see now the officer on the right is now not pushing someone, but grabbing them and pulling them backwards, not allowing them to leave. And same with the officer in the second, and the officer. All right. Well, that is pretty much how the night goes. I mean, they continue to push people around. This guy gets his backpack ripped off. This woman gets shoved to the ground. And all of this happens in just a minute and 47 seconds. So, that's what I wanted to show you.
Grady, thank you for your perspective. And just so you know, this is under investigation through the process that currently exists. This council has taken steps to actually enhance and improve the way investigations are conducted. And I want to thank the people of the city for voting for the ballot measure that was referred in November by this city council. So, my, one of my hopes for 2021 is that, on one hand, we hold the police accountable. On the other hand, we all agree that we want the same things. We want racial justice. We want equity. We want common sense police reform, and we don't want violence. So, let's try to make 2021 the year we're not all just pointing fingers at other people, but let's look at our own actions and how we can work together as a community to restore confidence in the safety of everybody in this community. And I would look forward to your participation in that as well. Thank you for sharing your thoughts today. Next item is item number two, Mr. John Carter. Welcome back, sir.
Request of John Carter to address council regarding city's response to coronavirus.
Good morning. John, are you there? There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. Good morning, John.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners, and congratulations to Commissioner Rubio, Maps, on joining the squad. I'd just like to take a moment today to speak on the city's coronavirus economic response. Community institutions have been closing left and right, but this is a trend that has been happening for many years, now just supercharged. The supposedly free market has turned the city into a speculative casino for financiers. Post-COVID, with hyper-low interest rates, this will be amplified severely. It's a colonizer mindset of a form, without regard for institution or local culture that hides through the guise of market economics. The irony of this being that Portland's economy is dependent on localism, it being unique and special, so that people want to visit. So, given the economic devastation of COVID, here are some ideas to right this ship and get the city moving with a more bottoms-up approach. Number one, tax abatements only for developers that have a community vision that is based in localism and local prosperity. In other words, developers who give a damn about Portland beyond profit. We need to scrutinize more who gets to build in the city. Two, block off selective streets for car traffic downtown. Allow local vendors to pop up. Give people the space without charge. Downtown is desperate, so this would be a cost-free way for the city to incentivize people to come on down. Three, vacancy tax on corporate developers for housing and commercial properties, so they don't hold on to something as a speculative asset. Small property owners would be exempt. Four, retrofit one of the public golf courses for a massive public works housing project. Tiny homes integrated with nature, along with tiny businesses interspersed throughout. Hire locals to do the job. A productive stimulus and more housing, a win-win. Five, a publicly funded municipal bank, so locals can have easier access to capital. Six, mural program for artists. The city pays artists and provides supplies to beautify the city through art. Overtake Philadelphia as the mural capital of America. Just ask them how good being a mural destination is for tourism and the local economy. Seven, establishment of a community small business resource center managed by the city, so people of all kinds can have access to resources and connections. Eight, for low-income populations, figure out how to make Portland Community College free and training for trades. So, in other words, practical skill-building programs would be free, getting people empowered with new skills and off to work. Also, Mayor Wheeler, last time I was here, I spoke with you about your ukulele and the power of music to connect empathetically with your constituents, and that I wish to speak further on creative policy ideas. You said if I forwarded my contact information to the council clerk, which I did, you would follow up, but you haven't yet. So, this is just a friendly reminder. Thank you for your time, everyone.
Yeah. And John, I freely admit I dropped the ball on that. And, Kealan, can you make sure that you forward that contact information to me? And I will give you my word, John, I will reach out to you, and I apologize for that. As you popped up, I remember I did make that commitment, and I will call you.
I remember. I remember these things.
Well, you, as well you should. I appreciate it. I'm not as young as I used to be, and unfortunately, I'm starting to act like it sometimes, but I look forward to that. And moreover, I want to tell you, this is an excellent list. The festival streets have been very, very successful during COVID, as well as the work that P-Bot did around sidewalk access. The vacancy tax remains under review. Repurposing public facilities for the purpose of either low-cost housing or supporting folks who are on the streets is very actively under discussion right now. The mural program is something that we're highly engaged in with nonprofit partners who are really excited about this. I'm excited about it. I think it's a great idea. And there are certain areas, for example, that I think could benefit from the telling of our stories to community through art, through murals. And Portlanders love their murals, so I strongly support your thinking on that. The Small Risk Business Resource Center is already something that is being contemplated by my office. We, of course, have our Prosper Portland, but that tends to deal with bigger development issues. We haven't really put small business front and center in the way that small business throughout our business districts and retail areas deserve to be centered. So, I am very supportive of that idea as well. And last but not least, I have long been a proponent of easy or free access to education and job training. All the issues we discuss here at the council around safety, around homelessness, around livability, around equity and diversity, all of these issues have a nexus around shared economic prosperity. And the key to shared economic prosperity is education and job training, and connecting people to the opportunities that are here. So, I just want to say, I'm really glad you're item number two on our agenda this year. I agree, and I will look forward to speaking with you at greater length in person.
Great. Yeah, I look forward to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes communications this morning. Colleagues, we'll move to the first time certain item. That's item number three.
Appoint Jessica Gettumire to the Planning and Sustainability Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2022.
Colleagues, as we welcome not only our new council today, we're also excited to welcome a new member to the Planning and Sustainability Commission. As mayor and commissioner of Finance and Administration, I request your confirmation to appoint Jess, Jessica is her formal name, but she goes by Jessie Gettumire, Gettumire, to the Planning and Sustainability Commission for a two-year term ending December 31, 2022. By the way, a background which Director Durbin will share a little bit more about in a moment. We have one position on the PSC that's designated specifically for a younger member of the community, the youth position that is a two-year term. This position, of course, has full voting rights, along with all other PSC positions, because we want all ages and all generations to have a voice for the community that we are planning today, but which will obviously have an impact on future generations. So, thank you for your consideration. I'll turn it over to Director Durbin to give some background about the PSC and to introduce our appointee, Director Durbin.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'm Andrea Durbin, Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. And I just want to say, I look forward to working with this new city council, especially you, Commissioner Rubio. As many of you know, the Planning and Sustainability Commission was formed by Adams to combine the Planning Commission and the Sustainable Development Commission 11 years ago. The PSC includes 11 volunteer members with expertise in a range of areas from land use and planning, architecture and design, conservation natural resources, and community development. And as the mayor noted, there's also one youth representative position which he will be appointing today. But first, I wanted to share a little background on the Planning and Sustainability Commission and their role. Their major role is to advise you, city council, on Portland's long-range goals and plans, land use and planning policies, and ensure sustainability practices are integrated. The PSC has a specific charge and statutory requirements through state land use laws to steward and maintain the city's comprehensive plan and zoning code, while ensuring that there is public input into that process. It is an important advisory commission that really helps shape the future of Portland. I'm excited today to introduce Jessie Gettumire, who would serve as a youth representative on the PSC. Jessie is a second-year law student at Lewis and Clark Law School, who possesses a strong desire to build a sustainable and equitable community. At Lewis and Clark, she participates in Public Interest Law Project, the Northwestern Environmental Defense Center, and the Food and Agriculture Law Society. Previously, after graduating from Kansas State University, Jessie had the opportunity to work with the United Nations Food and Agriculture Program Organization to prepare for the World Food Day in Rome, centered around the international effort to build a more sustainable world and a multicultural environment. Jessie shared that she is most excited about contributing to sustainable and innovative projects to improve our community. I'll take a moment now to ask Jessie to introduce herself to you and share a bit about her interest in serving on the PSC. Jessie.
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you, everyone, for having me here today. As Andrea mentioned, my name is Jessie Gettumire. I also use she/her pronouns. I'm really excited about the opportunity to begin volunteering as a Planning and Sustainability Commissioner. I think for us to be a truly democratic society, it's essential that we take the time to fully consider policy and planning decisions from a multitude of perspectives and challenge ourselves to think about the values that we want to emphasize in our community. The Planning Sustainability Commission makes the space to participate in this type of dialogue. During my time as a commissioner, I plan to utilize my academic and legal background to assess potential policy and development decisions through a critical lens. By listening to my fellow community members and emphasizing equity and justice every step of the way, I'm looking forward to helping Portland become a more environmentally and economically sustainable place to live for each and every person.
Very good. And Director Durbin, does that complete your presentation?
That completes it. It's now.
Very, very good. And colleagues, a question was asked in the chat. I just want to clarify. It's a two-year term, but it ends at the end of December. So, it is actually the end of December 2022, for those who raised what I thought was a good question. With that, colleagues, I'll entertain any questions. And if there are no questions or comments, I will certainly entertain a motion. This is a report.
I move accepting the report as presented. Welcome, Jessica.
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hardisty. A second. Was that Commissioner Ryan?
Maps.
Commissioner Maps. Thank you. Commissioner Maps. Seconds. Any further discussion? Kealan, please call the role.
Rubio.
Congratulations, Jessica, and I look forward to working with you. Aye.
Ryan.
Thank you, Jessie, for your service, and I appreciate that you're stepping in. Thank you.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
I want to first of all acknowledge that we had several really highly exceptional candidates apply for this younger person's position on the Planning and Sustainability Commission. Jessica, you impressed the heck out of me, and you impressed the heck out of everybody else. You have exactly the right skill set that we're looking for right now. I look forward to hearing from you and learning from you. And I'm looking forward to your years of service on this important commission. Thank you for stepping forward and volunteering. I vote aye. The report is accepted. The appointment is approved. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much, and thank you for your time today.
You bet. Have a great day. Have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda, Kealan?
We've had no requests, Mayor.
Very good. Please call the role on the consent agenda.
Rubio.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Aye. The consent agenda is adopted. Next item is item number 11 on the regular agenda.
Amend price agreement with Hitachi Ventara LLC for staff, technology, hardware, and services in the amount of $1,875,000 and extend contract by three years.
Colleagues, this ordinance will amend the pricing agreement for the city's enterprise storage vendor, Hitachi Ventara LLC, to add funds and to also extend the term of the contract in order to support citywide capacity growth, as well as lifecycle replacement of our technology equipment. We have Carolyn Glass. She's here from the Bureau of Technology Services, and she will make a presentation. Good morning. Happy New Year.
Good morning, Mayor Wheeler and Commissioners. I'm Carolyn Glass, a Division Manager in the Bureau of Technology Services, also known as BTS, and I have responsibility for this vendor. I'm joined by Shawna Graber, Manager of BTS's Technology Procurement and Cellular Services Team. We are here today seeking authorization to amend our existing contract with Hitachi Ventara, our enterprise data storage vendor, increasing the agreement by 1.87 million for a total revised value of $9.375 million, and extending the term by three years to November 30, 2023. Hitachi is the original equipment manufacturer, and we get our best pricing by purchasing directly from them. During this timeframe, we'll put together a competitive solicitation under a more normal return-to-work scenario. Hardware, software, and services under this agreement are used to support the city's data storage network, to increase capacity as needed by bureau customers, and to support the lifecycle replacement of equipment. Storage is used citywide for things like file shares, SAP, Amanda permitting system, high-end utility billing, and many other applications and services. Without reliable and adequate storage capacity, these services would come to a halt. Our implementation of Hitachi's hardware and software has resulted in very high reliability of storage systems and quick capacity growth to meet customer needs, while we continue to drive down costs for our bureau customers. A recent example of direct cost savings for bureaus was the implementation of next-generation file shares that replaced Windows File Servers in fiscal year 1920, while providing our customers with productivity enhancements and better protection for their data. while providing our customers with productivity enhancements and better protection for their data. Funding for this agreement is included in the BTS five-year and CIP plans. This amendment will allow us to continue with planned operations and capacity growth. We're happy to answer any questions.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
All right. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you very much, Carolyn. Appreciate it. Thanks for your team's hard work on this.
You're very welcome.
Item number 12, second reading.
Authorize the Chief Human Resources Officer to enter an initial three-year period to provide benefit-eligible employees access to fertility and family planning benefits for an amount not to exceed $350,000 over the life of the initial contract.
Colleagues, this was one of the longstanding efforts of Commissioner Fritz. This is a second reading, so we already had a presentation and extensive opportunity for public engagement testimony previously. Is there further business on this item before we call the roll? Seeing none, Kealan, please call the roll.
Rubio.
I want to just extend a thank you to Commissioner Fritz again for championing this policy. And it's another example of, you know, her longstanding commitment to supporting the city's diverse workforce and also to past senior policy director Claire Adamsek for initiating this policy and sharing her personal journey to become a parent, as well as elevating the experiences and struggles related to fertility and family planning for all kinds of families. So I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes, I want to also start off by acknowledging the hard work of Commissioner Fritz and our staff for championing this effort, and the Bureau of Human Resources for bringing this policy across the finish line. This effort supports employees who would otherwise not have access to resources, to fertility and family planning benefits and services. I speak from lived experience how important it is to keep expanding the true definition of what a family is, and I'm so grateful to live in a city that does just that. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
Aye.
Maps.
Aye.
Wheeler.
Very proud to support this. Congratulations, Commissioner Fritz. If you're watching, I hope you're not, but in case you are, thank you for your great work. Thank you to your team BHR and everyone from the city staffs who helped put this together and carry it to fruition. I vote aye. The ordinance is approved. Next item.
She's watching. I'd bet you money she's watching.
I, I bet she is too, and there's a piece of me that feels badly about that, but I bet she is. But any rate, Commissioner Fritz, if this gets to you, we miss you. Thank you for your great work, and this is really an exceptional note to end on. The ordinance is adopted. Next item is 1313.
Approve the amended and restated Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Plan 2021 to add projects and increase the maximum indebtedness.
Colleagues, I want to start again, as, as I did previously, by acknowledging the history of the city's blatant, unjust actions in North and Northeast Portland, as well as the expressions of concern from community members who showed up to testify. I believe I speak for all of my colleagues when I say the council is committed to continuing what's obviously a very important and necessary dialogue. It's important to note that the Interstate Plan Amendments and the concerns that were brought forward by community groups we heard testimony from, like EDPA II, are two distinct issues. But that doesn't mean there aren't currents running through both conversations, and we heard that during testimony. And I'll say this again, our vote today is not restorative justice. It will not, and it cannot, address the harm of the city's actions in North and Northeast Portland over many decades and the impact that those actions have on Portland's Black community. But the action shows the city's commitment to learning from the past and working towards a better future for the neighborhood and those who've been harmed. Over the last five years, thousands of Portlanders and people with historic ties to North Northeast have told us that it's important to help people avoid being displaced and have a chance to come back to neighborhoods that they were displaced from. The additional resources we're approving today will allow us to make those opportunities available for hundreds more families and many more small businesses. And it's a sign of support for community-led work that's helping Black Portlanders live and do business in the community. These strategies were developed in direct response to the history of the district and their community center. The resources made available through this vote will enable support of small businesses and anchor nonprofit organizations that provide culturally relevant goods and services and opportunities to create multi-generational wealth. Over the last four years, through the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Action Plan, Prosper Portland has provided grants and loans to 56 property owners, grants and loans to 30 business tenants, with 97% of the funds going to BIPOC-owned businesses and to support 27 homeowners. In addition to the North Northeast Housing Oversight Committee, I'd also like to thank the North Northeast Community Development Initiative Oversight Committee, the Williams and Russell Project Working Group, and the many community members who've shaped our work and held us accountable over the last five years. Finally, I'd like to express my appreciation to Multnomah County, my colleagues on the council, and our jurisdictional partners who are supporting this investment. And with that, colleagues, this is a second reading. Is there any further comment prior to the vote? Please call the roll.
Rubio.
Thank you. First, I want to give my appreciation to the community partners who, who drove the ordinance we're considering today, including North Northeast Community Development Initiative Oversight Committee, Portland Housing Advisory Commission, Williams and Russell Project Working Group, Prosper Portland Board, and numerous others. And thank you to Housing Director Shannon Callahan and Prosper Portland Executive Director Kimberly Branham and staff, and for the thoughtful intentionality in this work to address key issues and needs, particularly during this pandemic, to create more housing, stabilize small businesses, and support the good work of organizations serving the community in this project. I also want to thank and acknowledge the members and supporters of EDPA II, who have raised critically important issues that hold up a mirror to our expressed values about the past histories in the city and the harm done to Black communities and neighborhoods, and then numerous community members who have provided written testimony, especially at December 16th, the city council hearing, and all before and in between and up to today, written comments and other speeches. And I want you to know, I hear you, and I see you, and I hear, share the frustration and need for acknowledgement and action for these past harms. And I also want to acknowledge that this, this ordinance does not repair the harms done to Black Portlanders, the taking away of place in community and multi-generational wealth. We have a seriously a long way to go, and it is also not the ultimate solution to years of restitution and reparations that we as a city must come to terms with. This amendment is, however, a piece to the puzzle, to building community. And this is my third day on council, and while I wish I had more time to spend listening and exchanging ideas, I see this project as one way, not the way, but an important way to create more affordable housing and prevent further displacement and strengthen economic opportunities for BIPOC businesses. And every policy action approved on this council is followed with implementation. And should this measure pass, or this, this initiative pass, my staff and I intend to be engaged in implementation, have a close eye on it, and bring in impacted community members at every level that we can. But above all, I agree with communities that we cannot shy away from our negative history of displacement and racism. The way through this is to acknowledge our history and its real impacts today and finding ways to take action together to address the harm that's been done in the community. I know my colleagues believe this too, and I'm committed to working with them to authentically engage communities, not just for feedback, but for finding ways in which community members are in full partnership with us and to ensure long-term housing stability and economic prosperity for Black Portlanders. Black Portlanders have shaped the city, its history and economy, and deserve recognition and restitution. And you will see later today in the afternoon session that federal reparations for Black and Indigenous communities is a clear priority in our federal agenda. And at this December 16th council hearing, Commissioner Hardisty expressed a desire for conversations about reparations. And I deeply share in this desire for these conversations and look forward to those conversations that will benefit community. I vote aye.
Ryan.
Yes. Thank you, Directors Branham and Callahan, for your leadership on this issue. I'd like to start off by also thanking the three advisory groups for their expertise and collaboration in building this program, members of the North Northeast Oversight Committee, the North Northeast Community Development Initiative, and the Williams and Russell Project Working Group. Groups are largely made up of community members and leaders who come from the community and who have worked on this issue for years. I'd also like to acknowledge the community members who testified at the December 16th meeting, especially those from EDPA II, who called, and also the many who have called and emailed our office. I appreciate your input and perspective, and I'm committed to continued dialogue. The plan before us, which includes the recommendations of the advisory groups I mentioned earlier, is designed to ensure that the remaining Interstate Corridor Economic Development resources are invested in long-term goals to support community members who have not benefited from public and private investments to date. This plan seeks to establish a community of opportunity where members can build capital, have stability, and thrive. The North Northeast Housing Oversight Committee first identified the need for resources for affordable housing in Interstate almost four years ago, and I want to thank them for their leadership in helping identify a funding solution. These resources will allow us to continue the critical work of the Portland Housing Bureau and the North and Northeast Housing Oversight Committee to invest in projects that address the legacy of displacement in North and Northeast Portland. Over the last five years, in implementing the North and Northeast Neighborhood Strategy and Preference Policy, the Portland Housing Bureau's work has led to 501 affordable rental units, 791 grants, and 100 loans to prevent displacement, 57 new homeowners, with an additional 27 reserved for new homes. We now have an opportunity to expand, keyword, this work and provide more assistance to those who need it. These numbers will only increase. I support this plan. I'm committed to learning from the city's past mistakes so that we don't repeat them. This is a critical and important step in the right direction. I vote aye.
Hardisty.
I also want to thank both Prosper Portland, the community oversight boards that have been working on this project, Director Shannon Callahan as well for all the incredible work to get us to this point. It is clear that community voices, especially from the manual displaced persons group, are, are committed to making sure that we do not forget the promises that have been made to Black Londoners over and over and over again and not fulfilled. I absolutely agree with their point that reparations conversation is long, long overdue. But I also want to make sure that it is an inclusive conversation. It must include home builders who 50 years ago passed laws to make sure that they could develop the way they want it to. It's also true that Emmanuel should be at that table. It's also true that realtors who mastered the art of not selling properties to Black and Brown people in our community must also be part of that conversation. I, I am happy to say that the city's federal legislative agenda, which we will look at this afternoon and possibly approve, already includes reparations. We're already having those conversations with our congressional delegation because, of course, the federal government has to be a partner in a reparations-type of conversation. It, it is always important for me to remind folks that when 10,000 Black homeowners were displaced out of inner Northeast Portland between 2000 and 2010, nobody said we had a housing emergency. The housing emergency didn't emerge until white, middle-class families found it difficult to rent housing in the city of Portland. That is who we have been in the past. That is the legacy that all of us are serving under. But I am confident that with the right people at the right tables, we will be able to have a authentic conversation that incorporates many community voices who have been harmed by city policy. This, however, today, we're voting on extending the Interstate Urban Renewal Area because we have an opportunity to really make some good investments in Interstate area that without the urban renewal area would not be possible. We also, I also want to acknowledge both the school district and the county for, for allowing us to continue to use those tax dollars to invest specifically in Interstate area. We have a lot of work to do to create a city that is equitable and fair for us all. And I am thrilled that my new council colleagues share that vision of what's possible as we move forward. And today is really about investing in Interstate. But let's not allow this conversation to stop there. We have big work to do, and we have the opportunity as a council to really be leaders and making sure that all the right folks are at the table having a conversation. I am thrilled to vote aye today on this, on this effort. I will continue to talk with our congressional delegation about what reparations looks like at the federal level. Since it does appear we may actually have a functioning federal government sometime soon, so I vote aye.
Maps.
Thank you. I am going to vote yes on the proposal to extend the Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. I'd like to take a minute or two to explain why. This issue has literally been around for almost my entire life. In fact, as I was preparing for this vote, I was reading some documents that were signed by Charles Jordan in the early 1970s, back when he was the director for the Model Cities Program. And of course, a couple of years after that, Charles Jordan went on to become the first African-American to serve on our Portland City Council. In fact, Jordan filled seat number four, the seat that I fill today. And today is also my first city council meeting, and I am also your third African-American man to ever serve on Portland City Council. So it seems especially fitting that today, of all days, that I should take up and vote on one of Commissioner Jordan's old projects. Now, all of that history reminds me of a couple of things. It reminds me that the votes that we take here have consequences that last a long time. It also reminds me that if we choose well, on average and over time, the arc of history bends towards justice. Now, we all know that displacement has a long history in Portland. That painful history has left our communities scarred. And displacement will reach into Portland's future unless we make different decisions about how we invest in neighborhoods today. And that's one of the reasons why I'm voting yes on the proposal to extend the Interstate Corridor Urban Renewal Plan. I believe this proposal is our best strategy to begin healing the wounds caused by eminent domain. I would say that a vote against this proposal is a vote for the status quo. And one of the reasons why we're all here today is that the status quo is unacceptable. With this vote, we can bring $67 million of new projects, including affordable housing and community development projects to North and Northeast Portland. These funds will create 350 new affordable housing units. In addition, these funds will help promote homeownership through programs like loans to first-time homeowner, provider, or first-time home buyers. These funds will also help prevent displacement by making loans to establish residents in North and Northeast. And I think most importantly, these funds will be given preference to people who have been displaced from these neighborhoods. And I have every reason to believe that this is going to work. For example, a recent PSU study found that our preference programs overwhelmingly benefit African-Americans. For example, 84% of the people who participate in the city's preference programs are Black, and 65% of them have lived in their neighborhoods for their entire lives. And that's why I believe that this proposal is not part of the problem. Indeed, I believe it is part of the solution. The Interstate Urban Renewal Amendment is a modern The Interstate Urban Renewal Amendment is a modern, innovative way to address past injustices. It will help rebuild neighborhoods that were lost. It will help Portlanders generate and build intergenerational wealth. And I hope, pray, and believe passing this proposal will be the beginning of the healing for our city. And that is why today I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Aye, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, everybody. Next item is item number 1414.
Amend contract with Raymore Construction, Inc. for additional compensation to add contract work for the construction of the Gateway Green Access Road.
Commissioner Rubio. Oops, sorry.
Sorry. Resulting in a total contract authorization of $5,600,000.
Commissioner Rubio.
Thank you. Portland Parks and Recreation is currently implementing two projects at Gateway Green Park. The Gateway Green Park Development Project and the Gateway Green Access Road Construction. And these two projects will expand and maintain services to the underserved area of East Portland as well as create a regional park destination. Raymore Construction, Inc. is a Portland-based general contractor and is currently completing the first project for the actual park. And for efficiency purposes, Portland Parks and Recreation would like to utilize the same contractor for the second project, an access road to the park. This requires authorization for expanding the current Raymore Construction contract. So I will turn it over to Ross Swanson, Portland Park and Recreation's Capital Projects Manager, who will provide us with more context about the project and what this ordinance achieves.
Thank you, Commissioner Rubio. Can you guys all hear me? Everything working? Okay. Welcome new commissioners, by the way. Glad to have you aboard. I am Ross Swanson, the Capital Project Manager for Portland Parks and Recreation. I've been working on the Gateway Green Project for about six years now, I think, now that we've rolled over the calendar year. Can we please start the PowerPoint? Also, I should note Kathleen Brennis Marua from Procurement Services is here also to answer any questions. Can we get to the, just the slideshow presentation? There we go, thank you. I'm going to jump right to the next slide, we'll move this forward. Okay, thank you. So for those of you who don't know anything about the Gateway Green Project site, I think it's important to provide some context before we talk about this issue. Gateway Green is a difficult site to get to. It is located between two freeways, I-205 and I-84. It also is wedged between the railroad, Union Pacific Railroad, as well as the red line, the light rail line going to the airport. There is no public vehicular access to this park. The public gets there via the I-205 multi-use path. They can get there by bike or feet. That is shown on the map in front of you is the red dash line. So from the time we purchased this property in 2014, Parks and Rec has known that access would be difficult for emergency services as well as our maintenance staff. We can get there, it's cumbersome. We do have to cross the railroad tracks twice. And if we have larger vehicles, we have to solicit a Union Pacific flagger. So we have been working on a project to make, to improve this since we bought, got the park. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, here's a little more context. Currently, like the commissioner said, there are two projects on the Gateway Green site. One of them is the actual park that's shown in green. This is an off-road cycling park with trails, jumps, pump tracks, small player, a restroom and event space. The other, which is our focus today, is the access road. And that's that blue line that you see on the map. It starts over around Halsey Frontage Road and terminates itself in the park. While we had originally hoped that these two projects would go together, the access road, because we're crossing ODOT and Union Pacific Railroad, took quite a lot of time to get permits and permission to do this. So that timeframe dragged the access road further back. On the park side, our funding source for the park was, one part of it was a Metro grant for a million dollars. It was the Nature and Neighborhoods Catalyst Grant. And that deadline for spending that money was this last calendar year, so last week, which we did successfully. So at some point, we were stuck, we were wedged between these permits and funding requirements. So about a year and a half ago, we separated these two projects into two separate projects. However, while we were building the park this summer, due to park construction delays, due to pandemic, fire, utility providers in their delays, we identified a possible opportunity to merge these two projects into one contract. And at that point, we started talking to Procurement Services to make sure that if we did this, we had our i's dotted and our t's crossed. And that is why you see us here today. One of the extra benefits of this is we also feel like we'll exceed our equity goals around capital project contracting with the city of Portland. So, next slide, please. Okay, so that's, so that's our purpose here today. It's demand a construction contract with Raymore Construction, who was building the park, to include this road. The original contract value was 2.86 million roughly. With this new authorization, the request here today would increase to 5.6 million. That would equate to a 95.6% contract increase. As you all know, council authorizations require any contract increase over 25%. And hence, we are here for this request. The amendment would capitalize on our existing contract mobilization, the permits. And in doing so, we would expedite faster access, realize some cost savings as well, significantly exceed our DMW, ESB, SDVBE goals for the city. That's a mouthful. So in more, more detail for the benefits, we could talk schedule. Raymore Construction is mobilized at the site right now. They have all their necessary permits and permissions to go across Union Pacific and ODOT Railroad. These include permits, insurance, as well as a flagging contract by the time they enter into the railroad right away. By amending this contract, we would save up to eight months of time, the time that would otherwise be spent bidding, contracting, and then again permitting the new contractor through ODOT and Union Pacific. And it's not the local Union Pacific, it's through Omaha, so it's quite a cumbersome deal. Another benefit for this, for doing this would be we'd increase safety. The park is currently open. We could not keep it closed until we got all of this lined up. People were jumping the fences to ride the trails. So for those of you who don't know, we opened, we opened the trails in the weekend before Thanksgiving. It is a huge hit. And so we would like to get emergency access in there faster. Again, we can get access there right now, but it's cumbersome. And this, this road will allow much faster access. Finally, the cost. Our currently negotiated price for the, for the adding this work is $50,000 below the engineer's estimate. This in combination with the existing permits, using the existing flagging services, we anticipate saving over $100,000 in the budget. And finally, around equity. The current project is with Raymore Construction, which is a Portland-based minority-owned company. They're over on MLK, they're an African-American company. Their current contract is 100% DMW, ESB certified. They have five subcontractors. We would like to utilize that and keep, keep rolling with it. The percentage is 100%, clearly well above the 20% goal for the city. I will say, having worked with Raymore for a year, they've been fantastic to work with. This will provide an opportunity for Raymore and their subcontracting team to expand their experience and involvement in this type of project. The road access, the road project is different than the park project. So they'll get to expand their involvement and scale of the work, as well as they're going to be able to work with agencies like Union Pacific, Trimet, ODOT, as well as the FHWA. So it expands their abilities. So in summary, we, Parks and Rec, is with Procurement Services, would see this amendment as an opportunity to benefit safety, schedule, cost, and as well equity. And thank you, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions? Commissioner Hardisty, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ross, for that very thorough presentation. You mentioned several times that this particular contract helps Parks Bureau with their equity goals. And I want you to know it doesn't because when you come back with the next project, we're still going to ask the same question about who's getting those contracts and who's benefiting and who isn't. So, and this one, yeah, we have 100%. But, you know, I always am looking for us to exceed our goals, right? Not rest on our laurels. So this sounds like a great project. And I know when I was running for office a few years back, I had a group of people that were desperately looking for a off-road biking opportunity. And I'm happy to see that it's actually going to happen in my neighborhood. So good work, and I look forward to supporting this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Very good, colleagues. Our Commissioner Maps?
Yes, I just want to speak in favor of this program, of this proposal. I actually know Gateway Green, it's one of my favorite parks in Portland. If Portlanders, especially folks who like to do off-road biking, haven't discovered it yet, I encourage you to grab your bike and go out and check it out. It's great for kids. I've also organized events at this park, and I can confirm that access, especially for vehicles, is an issue. So I'm glad to see that there are plans to fix that. It's an important safety issue. I think some of the events that we've had, we've had concerns about being able to get an ambulance in there if we needed to. I assume this project will help with issues like that. So I'm glad to see the Parks Bureau and Commissioner Rubio leaning forward into making this happen for the people of East Portland.
Thank you, Commissioner. Do we have any public testimony on this item?
We have one person sign up, but I don't see them on the call anymore.
Can you call them just in case?
Sure, Timothy Swales.
Timothy, are you on? Very good, please call the roll, this is an emergency ordinance.
Rubio?
I just want to say thank you to the staff at Parks and also thank you to Northwest Trail Alliance and the friends of Gateway Green for your continued partnership in the development of this true community asset. Thank you, Ross, for your dedication to Parks over all these years. And I'm also happy to support this ordinance and the subsequent safety improvements to Gateway Green. And I'm also very happy to see Parks and Rec exceed the goals on this particular project. And I know there will be more to come. So I vote aye.
Ryan?
Yes, thank you Director Long and Ross, that was a wonderful presentation. I have to say how much I appreciate the visuals. I get criticized by my co-pilot in life that I'm quite a curious driver. And so I stretch my neck a lot, and I've been staring over there when I'm trying to figure out what's going on. And like, how do you get there? So it was so great to actually see the visuals. Clearly, we need to have emergency access. How smart to save time, which is money, by going the route that you did. And so there's really a lot to like about this and the momentum with contracting with the BIPOC community. And so I, I vote aye.
Hardisty?
Aye.
Maps?
I vote aye.
Wheeler?
Great work, I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. Thanks, Ross. Next up, item 1515.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and contract with the lowest responsible bidder and provide payment for construction of the Northwest Portland Sanitary Sewer Extensions Project, number E11128, for an estimated amount of $1,020,000.
Commissioner Maps?
Yes, colleagues, I'm delighted to have the opportunity to introduce you to this proposal. This comes out of BDS. Here is what motivates this idea. Some properties in Portland do not have direct independent sewer connections to the city's sewer system. These are called non-conforming sewers. Environmental Services has a program to help these property owners meet city code and connect their sewers directly. This program manages the sewer design and construction and pays most of the cost. This project would provide conforming sewer connections to 21 properties in Northwest Portland and build over 1,000 feet of sewer pipes. Construction is scheduled to begin in May and should be completed by the end of the year. I believe we have two staffers here today to provide more details. So I'd like to introduce Rachel Frogner, an engineer associate, and Joe Dvorak. Sorry, Joe, if I screwed up your last name. He's an engineering manager. Both are with Environmental Services. Rachel, Joe, please take it from here.
Great, good morning, Mayor, and members of council. Welcome new members. So for the record, Joe Dvorak with the Bureau of Environmental Services. As mentioned, this project is one of many in our non-conforming sewer program. And before I turn this over to Rachel, I want to thank her and the project team who have worked really hard to get this project ready for bid. So Kealan, if you wouldn't mind pulling up the PowerPoint? Great, and now I'll turn it over to Rachel with a short presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Maps gave a great introduction to this project. So I think a lot of what I'm going to say might be a little, a little repeat, but there'll be some visuals to go along with it. So if we could advance to the next slide. This project is, again, from the Non-Conforming Sewer Conversion Program. And this program constructs public sewer extensions in areas where public sewer is not immediately available. This particular project focuses on an area of Portland where there is a concentration of non-conforming sewers, that being Northwest Portland. And then it also focuses on an area where there are a concentration of signed public sewer utility waivers. And these utility waivers were offered to non-conforming properties between 2008 and 2012 and gave these properties an opportunity to lock in the sewer conversion charge for the fiscal year that they signed. So for this project, the average locked-in rate for the properties that have signed PISUs is about $5,700, whereas our current sewer conversion charge for this fiscal year is $7,100. And also, just a little quick reminder that non-conforming sewers can look a few different ways. One of them is private lines in the right-of-way, which are costly to maintain. And the other is what is depicted in the lower left-hand corner of the screen here, which is a shared-party sewer. Property B doesn't have immediate access or direct access. So my project would be constructing those extensions so that Property B would have direct access to the public sewer. Next slide, please. This project, again, is in Northwest Portland. You can kind of see it up there in the right-hand corner. There are nine extensions totaling over 1,000 linear feet of new sewer mainline and extending or providing conforming sanitary service to 21 properties. So translates to 21 new sewer service laterals. Throughout the life of this project, we've been conducting outreach with the affected properties, including branch maps, so giving each property an opportunity to have a say in where their connection is. And we will continue to outreach to these properties and communicate with them throughout the life of the project. Next slide, please. So the, the engineer's estimate is $1.02 million. That's with an optimal confidence level. We plan to advertise the project next month. And we do plan to release it to the Prime Contractor Development Program. BS has been working with Procurement Services to increase outreach to BIPOC-owned firms in the program to encourage more diversity. And we will, we will do that with this project as well. We expect construction to begin in May and to wrap up by the end of the year or early next year. Next slide. And with that, if there are any questions, we can answer them.
Very good, colleagues. Any questions? Excellent, that, that's a sign of a thorough presentation. Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, thank you. I just have one quick question, Joe, and that is, you chose the Northwest Portland area. I'm just curious about, is this a problem throughout the city? And is this just the beginning? I just don't have that context.
Yeah, absolutely. And Rachel or Melanie, who is the program manager, can also fill in. It is, it is common across the city. I think more common in some of the older neighborhoods where shared services was allowed at the time and is no longer meets code, but certainly within the core of the city, but also outside the city as well. Outside that core, I'm sorry. Yeah, we will be seeing more of these.
And I can just mention, we have done these projects on a smaller scale in Southeast and Northeast, Northeast Portland.
Terrific, very good. Kealan, is there any public testimony on this item?
Timothy Swales also signed up for this, but again, I don't see him on the call.
All right, it sounds like he was not able to join us today. Very well, this is a first reading of an emergency ordinance. It moves to second reading. Thank you, everybody. Next item 16.
Authorize a competitive solicitation and price agreements for furnishing sewer improvements for non-conforming sewer conversions, project number E08748. Project Number E08748 for a total amount of $15 million.
Colleagues, this is the second reading, so we've already heard a presentation and had an opportunity for public testimony. Is there any further business on this item? Saying none, please call the roll.
Rubio?
Hello?
Ryan?
Aye.
Hardesty?
I, for this particular project, I am hopeful that we will get updates about how successful we are in expanding the diversity of the contracting pool. I, when this originally came to council, I was told that, that Joe, you guys were going to spend some quality time thinking about how do we make this opportunity available to more BIPOC construction owners? And so it would be great if we were able to stay informed about how that process is working and what barriers we can help you remove in order to make sure that this opportunity is available. So I thank you for your additional information that you provided to my office. I appreciate your thoughtfulness in this process and I will vote aye, but I will be watching. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maps?
I share Commissioner Hardesty's commitment to diversity in our contracting. So I will pledge to my colleague today that we will get back to our outreach to contractors. And I vote aye.
Wheeler?
I vote aye. The ordinance is adopted. That completes this morning's agenda items. We're adjourned until 2:00 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.